She gonna, who's calling?
Dr. Chocol's back.
Okay.
Okay, we ready for the virtual learning program? Thank you very much, Ms. Faraj. So, the virtual learning program started for Dearborn Public Schools in August of this year as a way to meet the needs of families who had decided that they did not want their child or children coming to school at all this year, no matter what happened, no matter what the plan was, no matter what the health. So, with the permission of the Board of Education, we started this program and we did separate out the elementary students so that we got teacher volunteers to staff the program. We have 28 teachers, we have about 725 students, and that program began in August as a fully virtual program. As the public may be aware, we do have another application out, an enrollment application out available that is current through October the 30th to give parents another opportunity to apply K-12 for the virtual learning program.
Dr. Choco, can I just make a comment too? I just want to let everyone know that we have really pushed the envelope of HR and our staffing to accommodate parents with this. This is putting a lot of pressure on staffing movements. It put a lot of pressure on it, as the board is aware, back in August, which we would never be making such massive changes, but we did, and we kept extending the window for parents. But at the same token, then, we have, we have to put out there the reality that there is staffing movement, and there's no way around it. And there will be some staffing movement when you do that. So, when you accommodate parents, there's going to be some changes, but we're trying to do everything voluntary, and we're trying to limit the movement as much as possible. But we're doing it, and the board talked about it at the last meeting. So, again, we're really trying our best to accommodate parents. These are things we've never done before, and the staffing with the DFT, working with HR have, really have done amazing things, and there's going to be another round of it coming up if we do, you know, if and when we do have some in-person learning. So, I just want to, you know, thank our staff and our union for working together on this because the behind-the-scenes that goes on is tremendous, and I can speak to it personally because I spent enough years in HR to understand what it takes. So, people just have to understand it, and that's why we're also putting out a survey to get a general idea from parents. We understand that, you know, people want to know exactly, but these are, you know, parents that absolutely don't want their, you know, students in person, no matter what, and they have until the 30th to fill it out. And today, we're presenting what the plan will look like. Again, we're not recommending to start, but when it is, I think they're getting a pretty good indication, and we've been putting those documents out, you know, starting way back in August when we had this first study session. So, we'll continue to do that, and again, that just gives us some preliminary data so that it can assist us with staffing. It's very, very important.
Dr. Maliko, I thought we were very clear that sometime soon, we're going to have in-person learning.
Yeah.
And when we put out that survey, we're just asking them, what are your thoughts?
Correct.
And I guess there were some people that are confused, and the ones that were confused confused others, and they were looking at it as, how can you make a decision if you don't have a plan?
Right.
No, no, it was very simple. We are going to go into the classrooms maybe in November, if not November, sometime soon.
January, whatever.
And if you want to put your child, your student into the, you know, virtual academy for the remainder of the year, let us know so we can start planning for it because that was out there. People were protesting, we're not going to answer you, but the parents out there, you still have to the 30th. Am I correct, Dr. Choco? You have to the 30th, so the rest of this week to make that decision, and it sounds like we're probably going to be talking about some kind of plan moving forward so you have an idea of what we're doing, so.
I do have to say a big thank you to all of the teachers and administrators in elementary who reorganized at the very end of August, the point at which school was starting. Many parents were a little confused about the differences between virtual, the virtual and remote because to them, it was the same thing.
Sure.
It was all online instruction, and so our administrators and support staff spent hours on the phone just contacting parents to say, we want to explain to you what the differences are. The virtual learning program means you will not be coming into the building at all this year. The remote program means we're doing remote instruction now, but at some point, you will return in order to ensure that parents understood what those differences were.
Thank you for that.
So, we've got a fabulous group of teachers who we have learned right along with them. They now know a lot more than we do about the virtual online world, and we have two of them who will be here, are here with us today, one of them virtually and one of them is in person. So, Nancy Hadad is a fourth grade VLP, or Virtual Learning Program teacher, and we have Gina Morano, a second grade teacher. So, Nancy is joining us virtually, and I'm going to turn this over to first Nancy and then Gina in order to talk to us about some of the experiences that she's had as a teacher, as well as some of the reactions and responses from students and families. So, thank you, Nancy, for, for waiting very patiently these past few hours.
Good evening, President Berry, Board of Education members, Superintendent Maliko, and all the attendees in the entire Dearborn community. First of all, I'm really privileged to be here with my colleague Gina to give a brief overview of my VLP experience. Now, when I was asked to do this, actually, the theme that came to my mind is invention, literally. Just to teach in a virtual learning program for a whole entire year, I had to really reinvent everything that I'm doing because it's different. It's not the norm. It's, it's totally, um, it's totally challenging, and it's been an authentic self-invention experience in my teaching career. I really had to figure out new ways to improve process of teaching and learning in my classroom in order for me to, to engage the students. In the beginning, it was not easy, of course. The road was bumpy. You know, it was a systems change in Dearborn, and we had to go through so much that, you know, it's behind-the-scenes work where, you know, with MyStar, merging all these students from different schools, a launching of a new learning management system, Schoology, which we are very thankful for, a new, you know, curriculum for, for, for English Language Arts, so many variables. Of course, it's a big change for all of us. We're not experts in virtual teaching. You know, this is new to all of us, and all of the virtual teachers are really laser-focused on how can we improve the learning of our students? How can we just, are we doing enough? At the core, definitely, is students. Students are taking the NWA. We're being responsible for their growth. These students, their parents chose to stay home. So, it was very important to, to just, a complete shift. This is your classroom. It's Zoom. It's through Zoom. Yes, the students are in their home, but we have to, as VLP teachers and personally, got to create this, I have to be responsive in the way I'm teaching, differentiate. We have, like, for me personally, I have a special ed teacher, Ms. Wilkie, that pushes in mark in my class. I have English Language learners, and I have a support person that comes in to support the Spanish student in there. So, there are so many aspects, and I'm very thankful for all the extensive support that we've been provided because this contributes to us improving our job and us delivering instruction on a daily basis in the classroom. Yes, honestly, nothing beats, nothing, nothing better than being in a classroom with students, but the situation, you know, with COVID-19, many of our students, for example, some of my students, they had, you know, kidney transplants. There are health issues, and that's why they had to stay home, and that's why I'm here to teach them, to establish this sense of personal relationship. For example, these students, I can't be face-to-face with them. You know, some of us teachers are going out to their homes. We're doing drive-bys, so they're at the comfort of their home, safe, and we just say, and of course, this creates a person, you know, a personal relationship between me and my students. So, thank you for all the staff members that have contributed to the success of all the teachers, all the VLP teachers. Definitely, the district has done tremendous job in creating a program out of nothing, basically, and recruiting so many teachers from different buildings. Yes, so, big changes, but online teaching is still teaching, and we are responsible for students' learning after all.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you so much, Ms. Hadad. We know that you, as the teacher, are what creates that community for your learners, so thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Morano. Again, thank you so much, Gina, for waiting so patiently.
Yes, I want to thank both of them. Thank you for waiting so patiently as well. You're here.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Good evening to you all. My name is Gina Morano, and I am a second grade VLP teacher. And like any new program, you know, there's going to be kinks that need to be worked out in the beginning of it, and I want to give a big thank you to Jill, Fatme, Shannon, and Masum for creating documents, sharing data sheets, setting up meeting schedules with us, and answering all of our questions to make us more comfortable. So, I say, I've really enjoyed the VLP program so far. I actually initially didn't think I'd be able to build relationships as well as I have so far. You know, just because you're on Zoom doesn't mean you can't speak to the kids and hear what they're saying. They, they still want to come and see your face, and I want to see their faces, and for the most part, my kids turn on their cameras, they want to participate. They say, when am I going to meet with you next? And, you know, I go over their schedules every day with them. And, you know, I want to speak to the parents in the VLP program. They may have picked this program for a reason, but they are very attentive to their students' work. So, and even if they've missed like one assignment, you know, if I email them, they'll quickly respond and say, okay, I'll make sure so-and-so gets it done. So, overall, I've had a very positive experience. I think the kids are becoming more familiar with the tools that we're using, and even being in second grade and being seven years old, they are getting better and better with submitting their assignments and knowing what's expected of them. And lastly, it's been, I wanted something that was consistent all year long, and I think that's what's working for me and for my students in the VLP program. Any questions?
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Yes, thank you very much.
One thing about waiting to the end, we're all getting tired.
May I make one comment?
Please.
Ms. Morano knows, yeah, Ms. Morano knows second grade in Dearborn because she's been there. She's a product of Dearborn Public Schools, so she makes me really proud to see her standing there.
Oh, thank you so much.
I'm really touched by, by teacher Hadad as well. I mean, her affection, both of their affections for their students is really heartwarming, but I know Ms. Morano personally and remember her from second grade in Dearborn, and it's a real pleasure to see her return, sir. Thank you.
Thank you again. And so, this concludes, and is a summary of the recommendations for starting the act. So, any questions other than the ones that have come up throughout the presentation?
Trusty Thorpe?
A question that came to my mind when we were talking about the virtual learning program for the secondary level. Big concern that was brought up two weeks ago was teachers having to potentially leave their buildings. They're not guaranteed to go back to their buildings, but would those teachers even need to be in a virtual system all day long? Wouldn't it be possible for those teachers to maybe have one or two classes that are virtual and the rest face-to-face?
Yes, those possibilities very definitely exist. A lot of it will depend on, obviously, the students who apply, the grades they apply, how many students will apply from each high school, how many students will apply in the classes that they're taking, because as Principal Martin shared, you know, at the high school level in particular, there's a huge variety of courses, and so the scheduling challenges that exist, that will be accomplished, they are vast, but they will be accomplished by second semester, as long as we know the families and the students that select the program.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that it's, it's a totally different ballgame than for the K-6 or K-5, that they could be some hybrid teaching now, where they could be virtual for some and in-person for others. Thanks.
Possible.
Well, I did notice, and I think it was in board briefs, that we're up to around 3,000 now that have signed up since we reopened it back up again. I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're close to about 3,000 families that have enrolled thus far with the secondary enrollment.
Like the question last time, was that split between elementary and the upper?
It seems like there's about 11% of them are elementary, 13% of them, 11% of the elementary and 13% of the secondary that make up that 3,000. So, it's about 900 elementary students roughly. And again, what that number, you know, is at the end of it, once the application closed, the enrollment process closes, and once we confirm with families what that is, along with obviously having a plan for, for return, one that, that is approved by you as the Board of Education, families will be able to make their final decision.
I can add too that some of that may come down too. We talked about it today, just, I know Fatme had mentioned that, you know, because some parents reapply even though they applied, so when we were looking at the numbers, so it's shifting, so the final, the more accurate is going to come out after the 30th because they've had to go in and check the parents that may have been double-entered because of the way we did the online system to make it convenient. So, that's part of it.
So, those numbers aren't.
And it was just discussed this morning between Ms. Peterson and Ms. Faraj. So, just be aware that that, it's a little bit fluctuating right now, so we have, but we'll have it once we get, the window closes on the 30th.
And what also happened too is that parents who applied in August, their students were placed in the virtual track, but since we were all remote, it didn't matter because the instruction is obviously the same. Well, many of those families also reapplied, so we've got to clean up all of those numbers.
Yeah, so it might not be.
We're making it convenient for parents, but it puts a little extra work on the, on the scheduling side.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, if we can get to the next part of the agenda?
Oh, boy.
That's the one you're looking forward to?
Oh, yeah, I'm so excited about reading that 54 comments.
I do have two cards, so I want you to read the.
Okay, you're starting with some there.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and read the.
Do you want to start with the people who are here?
Yeah.
Who's saying?
Yeah, we need to get to it first. You want to read the sentence, the paragraph?
Oh, you want me to read the citizen participation?
Please.
Oh, that's what you're.
Citizens wishing.
Turn them out.
Yep.
I'm leaving.
You ready?
Please.
You want me to read the directive first?
Yes, thank you, Madam Secretary.
Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action can complete a virtual blue card that will be posted on, at 4:00 PM on Monday, October 26, 2020, on the district's website form received by this time right now. The start of the citizen participation will be read by the board secretary. The board may not be in position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. All of the 54 that I have are on topic. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. Board president reserves right to limit times.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Yeah, both of mine are actual on agenda items. The first one is, I know you addressed this before, it's one of our students, Luke Hetrick of Dearborn, please.
Hello, I addressed the board last board meeting a couple weeks ago. Nah, I'm back. So, a couple things have happened since then. You know, sports, still going on, fall sports. Some of them are wrapping up, but my team's still practicing. We want a district championship Thursday against Woodhaven, so, you know, we're still having fun. Etsel had our homecoming game Friday. I mean, it looked a lot different from homecomings in the past, but they invited some students, a few students. You know, the game was there, there were some parents there, it was fun, and we social distanced, were wearing masks, it was all safe and fun, but it was, it was nice to have that moment when, in a year when a lot of those moments, you know, don't get to happen. You know, some seniors took the SAT on the 14th. From what I saw, went really well. Everyone stayed on, you know, their side of the hallway, everyone was wearing a mask. All the desks were facing the same way in the classrooms. As far as I know, went off without a hitch. Underclassmen and, well, not underclassmen, ninth, 10th, and 11th graders are even ready to take the PSAT this week, Tuesday and Thursday. Seniors are looking forward to our Tuesday and Thursday off, so it's shaping up an interesting week, but in the last weeks, learning labs were canceled for general education or paused or, you know, whatever exactly happened because the seven-day average has now risen up to just over 5%, which is, or for positive cases in Wayne County, excluding Detroit, is now just over 5%, which is apparently the magic threshold set by the CDC, which is fine. So, really quick, I want to talk some numbers. So, in the month of October, and this is all based off the information on the Dearborn Schools website, the school districts has had 19 community cases between staff and students, has zero transmitted cases in, like, through the schools, which is really good. So, Detroit is one of two school districts in the state larger than us, as I'm sure all of you know, with 50,000 students, start 20,000. The same month of October, Detroit, who is doing a blended learning right now, they have students in person, Detroit has had seven cases and zero transmitted cases, and that's based off information off their website, their COVID dashboard that the state requires them to put out, just like we have to. So, I just want to point out that it is possible with, you know, as the positive rate comes over 5%, it's possible to still be in school, still have students face-to-face, and, you know, be safe. I just want to make sure that's clear, especially Detroit, school district a lot larger than us. It's not some small district with, you know, one high school and two middle schools and a handful of elementary schools. That's considerably easier to keep everyone social distance because they have a lot fewer students and staff. Detroit's a huge district, and they're doing it just fine, so I'm just saying it's possible, and that's maybe something we should look at. Getting back to learning labs, I think learning labs are great. I think the teachers that attested to it earlier are, you know, agreed, everyone agrees in-person learning is a lot better, and I think learning labs should be started as soon as possible. I'm sure the board agrees because it's better for education, but learning labs, if, as the teachers mentioned earlier, if you're trying to cycle through your whole class load, you know, so, for example, I did, I did some quick math because I like, I like numbers. So, if you are a middle school or high school teacher, you teach five classes a day, assuming you're averaging about 30 students per class, which I know it's a little bit less, but we're going to make number easy, you have 150 students in a day. So, if you're teaching, if you're able to do a learning lab with three periods, like three learning labs a day with three students each, that's nine students a day, and you're able to do that twice a week, as the one teacher mentioned, that's 18 students a week. It'll take you eight weeks to get through all of your students. That's almost a whole card marking to only be able to see a student for 40 minutes face-to-face. And that's not okay, especially if you're a student that's struggling in that class or subject, you need more help, which I understand. So, if you start putting more focus on those students that are struggling, need the help, you're putting students like myself that tend to sit at the upper end of a class without face-to-face instruction, which is fine. I don't, students at the upper end of class don't need the face-to-face instruction necessarily to keep our grades up or, you know, to make sure we're getting the content, but then we're losing out on that face-to-face experience and all the other benefits you get with it because it's still better, even if we're understanding content virtually, it's still better face-to-face. You still, you know, you retain the knowledge better and, you know, all the other benefits. You get to see, even if it's only two of your classmates, you get to see two of them face-to-face. You get to say hi to your teacher, you get to, if you're like elementary student, you get to see your teacher in your classroom, or if you're a ninth grader or sixth grader, you get to see the building and the school, and when you don't get that, it really sets back your learning. A couple other things that were mentioned earlier that I want to touch on before I get to everything else is, right now, the district doesn't have a plan for return. You know, they have lots of plans to discuss, and I think the plans presented are really good. There was a lot of plans last time, but there is no set plan that says, you know, when the numbers drop below this, that we're going back with this method, right? Learning labs are set at 5%, but they were canceled when positivity rates only hit 4.6, you know, so you have that inconsistency, and now, as we discuss heading back to school, you got, there's not, there's not a set plan yet. I know, everyone's working on it, there's lots of committees talking about it. There's not a plan. So, let's say, you know, the numbers go in our favor over the next couple weeks, you know, positivity rate comes down, people are wearing the masks, you know, new cases are down, all the numbers are looking really good, there's not a plan in place yet, so we can't go back. And so, the next board meeting, which is in two weeks, you guys would have to then approve an official plan, and then it would take a couple weeks after that for all the, you know, finer details, all the bus routes, all the dividing of students into groups and all the, you know, everything to be absolutely finalized, all the smaller details hashed out, and suddenly, even if the numbers look good next week or the week after, we're not going back to school till almost December because there's not a plan ready yet. I understand everyone's working on it, I'm just pointing that out, that I think a plan, even if you're not going to implement it, should be approved sooner rather than later so that way, when the numbers do drop to a level acceptable to go back to school, we can as quickly as it is safe to do so so that way, we're maximizing the amount of time that we could spend in person. Now, the plan presented, the suggested start schedule starts November 16th with, I believe, K through three, K through two, and then the rest of elementary school coming back after that. That starts phasing in November 16th, their recommended schedule, which I know is tentative. It does put secondary back in school till the next semester, which is mid-January. Personally, as a senior, as a secondary student, I don't like that idea. I understand the scheduling nightmare that would be caused if we started sooner, the virtual learning program, kids you have to pull out, and the teachers you have to pull out, the whole nightmare. As a DCMSD student, my schedule's never been right the first try or two. I understand that scheduling that many kids is a struggle, but putting that many kids to not start until January, I don't, I don't think that's a good, good idea just as a student. I think our education's going to start to hurt. I think it's going to show up as we start taking standardized tests, you know, the SAT scores coming out next week, the SAT scores coming out a couple weeks after that. I think as the district starts to look at those, and then scores that come on after that, card marking ends Friday, high schoolers at least, as the district starts to look at some of those scores and grades, I think you guys are going to see a downward trend in scores because online education isn't working, and that's even going back to the spring, which I know was a mess for everyone because it was such a rush. But my, like, my math teacher has told us, we're a month behind where she normally is, and there's just nothing we can do to catch up because that's just, that's just how it is. We missed content in the spring, and she has to make up for that before we can start really getting into the content we should be in right now. So, I think test scores are going to struggle, and I think kids are struggling, and if we don't go back till January, I think those students that are struggling right now are going to be even further behind, and that's going to set up those kids for failure or a long road to recovery over the next couple years, especially for those in like middle school who then have to recover all that information they potentially lost or are behind on, you know, as teachers have to accommodate for the next couple years that they missed that, and so now, those teachers have to teach their already crammed schedule plus whatever those students missed. One or two last things. I understand that right now, the positivity rate has gone back up a little bit, it's over 5%. I understand that right now, this, you know, this week or next week, you know, we can't start phasing in back to person or back to learning labs. I'm just, like Trusty Thorpe said earlier, there has to be a set guideline, whether it be 5%, whether it be 5%, and something Wayne County puts out or the state, there has to be a set because as a student, and I can speak for my parents, we need to be able to look at, you know, the numbers ourselves and say, okay, this week, the numbers were this, we can be expect to go to learning labs and be back in school next week, we can expect to have, you know, we have an idea of what's going on so we can plan accordingly, you know, because everyone's got a busy life and stuff they have to plan around, so knowing the standards ourselves, people can take it upon themselves to look up those numbers and just know that the district is going the certain route for that day or week or month. So, that's about all I have. I will say again, back to the topic of sports, I know some sports seem I know some sports teams have had to stop practice and stop games because of COVID. Uh, somebody on the team gets a case and then they have to stop, but as far as I know, there's, the protocols have been really effective. Um, if somebody on the team gets a, uh, positive test or thinks they have the case, the team stops, there's no spread. And I think that just goes to show that the protocols work. And that we need to stop being afraid what might happen and start looking at what has happened. Sports teams are going good. There's studies being published, it seems like daily now, that schools aren't related to huge outbreaks or huge increases in cases. I think we need to, or the district and the school board needs to look at that information and realize that maybe we start, you know, slowly coming back, whether, I'm not saying jump, you know, headfirst, but maybe, you know, dip a toe in the water so that we can start inching our way back to in-person learning and a better education for everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Hetrick, uh, you mentioned numbers. You like numbers. We like numbers too, yeah. I mean, nobody likes numbers more than I do, except my colleague, trustee Thorpe. But, uh, today, this morning, I woke up at six fifteen in the morning to, uh, first thing I saw on the computer, which I discussed with Dr. Malenko earlier, a district not too far from here. Uh, a student brought the virus into the building and now we have a staff member and another fifty other students in quarantine.
Talking about, uh, Woodhaven?
Yeah, yeah, it's not too far. I don't want to mention districts.
You, you mentioned Woodhaven and I'm thinking, well, that's probably not the best example.
You mentioned Detroit. Numbers are important, but we, the school board, uh, we have, you know, we have direct contact to the, to the, to the community. We hear things. So there is a community member that, uh, works in Detroit, and again, a student brought the virus. The reason I mention this because I am so happy and proud of our students, what I've been hearing from you, from the principals, from teachers, how well the students are doing. But at the same time, we have to be concerned with our community and with our staff members. So that staff member in Detroit did catch the virus, went home. Her exact words is, I would, I wish I would die instead of going through this again. And she's still home. Three weeks later, she's still home. The medication she took are causing, you know, other seizures and other things going on in her life. So, there's a lot of things that factor into this and I, I respect that. I'm very proud of the job you're doing here. And, you know, some of my colleagues are looking at me because I didn't hit the gavel after three minutes. You're, you're the reason we're here. I said it last time. You're the reason we're here, so we're proud of the way you present yourself. But there is a lot of other factors involved, so. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
I understand there are a lot of factors involved and I don't, and he's a board.
No, no, I agree with you. I agree with you. Thank you very much.
Congrats on the, uh, did you say district?
Yes.
And they're playing tomorrow.
Yes, we're playing regionals tomorrow.
Want to give a, want to give your team a plug? You're welcome to.
As a student in my.
I know, because these students are not, that was the new clarification, unfortunately. So we'll have Mr. Muston and, uh, come up and do that.
So for the two other adults we have here, I'm not gonna be as nice.
Swing the podium, please.
Thank you, Mr. Hetrick.
I got you, David.
President Barry, before the next comment, I want to just mention that, um, Luke's comment about, the need for clear numbers that we need to post as far as reopening. I think that's very crucial. That we need to set those standards for, so everybody would know exactly how the decision is being made.
That, that's an easy topic to put on the table, but unless somebody's willing to come up with the solution to it, uh, you know, if somebody is, I'm all ears. I mean, yeah, what is it? What is it? What is it out there? Do we, the professionals, or what is it that we can look at to say, okay, as of November nineteenth, let's open up the schools? As of right now, me personally, we just have to trust.
Well, once we get through the citizen participation, we can say what we're looking for.
Yeah, exactly.
What should make up the.
I don't want to just say, we need just one number to look at and make the decision.
No, not a bad one.
Our next speaker is, uh, president of DFT, Jane Mazza, wants to talk to us regarding school reopening. President Mazza?
Hello, good evening, President Barry, school board trustees and Dr. Malenko. Jane Mazza, president of DFT, sorry, um, there's something in this room that always gets me after I've been here four or five hours in a row. No, anyway. Sorry. I am speaking tonight in support of remaining in a remote instruction. Um, teachers are very stressed this school year. Um, as I mentioned two weeks ago, they had to learn many new, uh, technologies and pedagogies to support their remote instruction. Now, I will say, if we do decide to go back to a hybrid, if the numbers, uh, warrant that, I do, uh, agree with the plan that, uh, Mr. Higgins presented earlier with the, um, Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday schedule, Wednesday synchronous. Because I did, um, pa- put out a survey to all the elementary teachers and overwhelmingly the teachers that took the survey, it was over seventy, probably eighty percent that agreed with that plan. And what I had used was the plans that had been presented, um, two weeks ago. So of those four plans, the teachers, the elementary teachers overwhelmingly wanted the Monday, Thursday, I have to think every time, Tuesday, Friday, Wednesday plan. But I want to tell you, uh, which has been brought up tonight, the COVID positivity rate continues to increase and it is scary. I, I get a, a stomach ache every time I look at the numbers, because I know I'm gonna get calls. I'm very worried. I'm worried about our teachers. I'm worried about our staff. I'm also worried about our students. And, you know, someone said to me, oh, it's no big deal. We have to get over COVID. Well, tell that to the thousands of people who have passed away and their loved ones. So I'm really, really concerned with how the numbers are looking. And I really appreciate Dr. Malenko and the board agreeing to close the learning labs because, yes, we weren't at five percent, but we are at four point six and Dearborn's infection rate had doubled. And on that Friday and Monday, the COVID numbers, or excuse me, the infection rate in our schools had doubled. So we could have sat back and waited for it to get to five, which I believe this week it's at five point six. But I guess we could have also waited on a beach when the tsunami wave is coming and say, wow, man, that's a nice looking wave. Wonder how long we have to get to the hills. I'm glad we ran to the hills quicker, because I think we kept the infection out of our buildings. So with that said, I'd like to say, I'd like to push to keep us virt- uh, virtual or remote for as long as it's safe. And once the numbers show that we can go back, then yes, we're all on board, because teachers want to be back. We know that teaching is in, in person is our best thing. That's what we want. But I'm just asking that we keep the safety as a number one priority, because that's what I've been doing. And I appreciate the board, because I know that's what you have been doing too. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last, uh, in-person, uh, comments are coming from Mrs. Nicole Bearcat from Dearborn. I'd like to speak to the board about teachers.
President Barry, do we need to call for an extension during the?
This is just a study session, so.
Yeah, it's not the same agenda.
But thank you very much, trustee.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Um, good evening. This is a continuation of my speech from last time. Um, I didn't want to go over my three minutes, so I saved the reading of the letters until today. Um, I'm gonna just read one letter today to save time. Um, I appreciated all the positive experiences that we heard today, but not all of the teachers feel the same way about working here. Um, future later, letters can be available, um, for you, Mr. Barry, and online. Um, so this is from one of your previous teachers that left the district. I'm gonna kind of summarize some of it to take out names. So, "To whom it may concern, I was a speech and language pathologist for Dearborn Public Schools for nine and a half years." "In that time, I was in seven different schools. My first year was at Howe and we went through six principals, six." "I think back now and I guess I should have taken that as a hint of what I was in for." "After two long years at Howe, I was placed at Smith." "While at Smith, we had three principals in my seven years there, countless assistant principals, more teacher turnover than most people would believe, and various talks from the boss to union presidents about how things were going to change for the better, but it never did." "Also, in my tenure in Dearborn, there were multiple directors of special ed." Then the lady that came between him, she kind of goes through who went through that chain of command. It looks like four people. "I guess I just stopped paying attention to names because no one stays that long." "There were also so many coordinators, I also don't remember all of them." "The bottom line is that in my nine and a half years in Dearborn, the turnover was excessive and it continues to be." "The conversation amongst your employees during all of this turnover is, when is someone going to take notice? When is someone going to do something? There is obviously an issue within the district, the administration, and the individual schools and programs if people are leaving en masse's." "The best is that the boss actually thought we were all stupid enough to believe the speech he gave during his back-to-school assembly talking about how Dearborn is growing so quickly that they had to hire two hundred-plus teachers." "We all knew someone who had left and why they had left, and we all knew that Dearborn's growth had nothing to do with it." "We all know how we were feeling at the start of every year. We all looked at each other and ruled our eyes." "Staff is leaving for multiple reasons and here are a few." "We are or were completely unsupported in every aspect of our job." "We are or were disrespected a lot, both professionally and personally." "Dearborn has a culture from admin of taking revenge on someone who sticks up for themselves or someone else, whether it be a student, other staff, or parents." "Everyone knows that you will be treated like garbage by your administrator, transferred to an undesirable position or building." "Therefore, no one wants to say anything to change the horrible situation they or someone else is in." "Nepotism rules. Promises are made and rarely kept. Students are never first, never." "Special ed students will always be last, as well as their teachers, ancillary, and other support staff." "I've literally watched upper admin walk away from a child with Down syndrome who was trying to present something they learned and then turn around and take a selfie with that child like they actually cared." "Communication is absolutely horrible, even now. With everything that is going on, I hear the district sent out information to the parents before they communicated with staff." "That is not uncommon. It's embarrassing to have to hear about changes being made from parents." "The union has historically not been on the teacher's side. Hopefully, that is changing with the new president." "There's never any money for anything. Where is all the money? We can't even get color pictures needed for communication for our special ed kids without dropping everything and running across town to the graphics lab." "PD will never pertain to your job unless you are a teacher, which I am not." "Testing is the most important aspect of Dearborn." "They are constantly testing and everything rides on those tests. Teachers freak out, kids feel it and freak out, parents are sick of it and how much time is taken away from instruction to torture these kids with all this testing." "There is zero social emotional instruction going on." "It's hard for me to believe that any administrator cares about the social emotional health of the kids in Dearborn." "Testing, that is what ti- is top priority. It's quite sad." "Maybe this is more than a few reasons, but I think I'm making my point. Working in the schools is a second career for me." "I wasn't fresh out of school with no job experience. People told me the schools would be too political and I was prepared for that." "What I wasn't prepared for was how incredibly bad employees in the Dearborn School District could and would be treated." "The constant disrespect of staff members' professional opinions was unbelievable." "I know there are several people who are looking for jobs at this very moment." "Dearborn has great potential and it used to be the place to work, but now it has such a horrible reputation, low morale, and a negative work environment, that I can't imagine that teachers and other staff are rushing to apply." "I left this district for many reasons, moto- most of which are stated from above. I never felt appreciated from the top down, with the exception of a few who never lasted long." "Administrators love to fluff every email. You're so appreciated. Thanks for all your hard work. We couldn't do this out without you." "Well, sorry, your actions speak so much louder than your words. No one feels appreciated. No one feels like their hard work is worth it." "And the funny thing that is you couldn't do it without us, but you act like we're a dime a dozen and the way you treat people doesn't matter, but it does." "I'm thankful for my time in Dearborn. I learned about a community and culture that is gravely misunderstood." "I made an insane amount of friends I will cherish forever. I learned from my peers and I learned how I didn't want to be treated as a school employee." "I'm thank- thankful that I joined a school team where we get straight answers. I feel respected and appreciated." "It's not all about testing in my new, new district and there's a social emotional instruction happening. I think here, students are first." "As a parent, I'm looking for transparency." "Board members, I'm asking if you would send out an employee survey." "Make it anonymous so that teachers can answer honestly." "Where the results come directly to all of you, so that nothing is filtered out, good or bad." "I look forward to hear how great our teachers are being treated from our teachers." "Not a rebuttal to my last visit here." "Parents, be an advocate for your children by supporting our teachers. There is so much more to recognition and appreciation than words." "Administration, lead by example." "Thank you very much."
Thank you, Ms. Bearcat.
Can I make a comment?
Well, of course, of course.
So I'm gonna have David bring some data up, and of course, we appreciate everyone's opinion. I presented some data just to show, because we want to look at the overall and, you know, we pride ourselves, and so I, I can't speak for everyone, but I can speak for myself, just that, you know, when I say we appreciate teachers, I mean it. And I think I've shown that over my, you know, twenty-five-year career, not making it, uh, and I know our team does, and that's what we stand for, is the value and, um, as I mentioned, you know, going into, um, virtual classrooms and, and feeling that dialogue with teachers. Now, I wish I could do it in person, uh, but right now I'm able to do it virtually. Or like the great teachers that we saw here today are some that I've seen on the interview, and it is very sincere. And, you know, we want to, if we can, get to a hundred percent, if we can, and we want everyone to feel, you know, valued. Um, but I do feel like I need to, you know, uh, respond because the data just doesn't show a massive exit as I presented, um, the number of retirements. I presented it early. Um, we know that we have some people that are going to be, um, maybe not unhappy, and I want to make, I want them to be and to uh, be fulfilled, and we've been working hard within the strategic plan. And we did actually have a survey last year, uh, that, um, we use for, um, uh, staff. And we had a pretty good respondent. I know trustee Thorpe, you were, uh, the board has seen the survey, and we were actually planning, um, at the chatting event in May, we were gonna have two in-person to give the data, but with COVID hitting, we delayed it and we decided that we were going to do it during one of the Facebook virtual. So, um, so we gotta kind of look at the data in total. Having said that, I will say, you know, obviously, we want to value all of our employees, all of our teachers, uh, but the overall data just doesn't support it in its entirety. Um, you know, you're gonna have some individuals both on both sides, and, and I think I forwarded the board, you know, some positive comments. Um, but David, if you could pull up, we have from the survey that was done last year, um, we had, uh, question, "All things, um, considered, am I satisfied for my, with my job?" We have, um, seventy-five percent, uh, responded strongly agree, agree, and other sixteen percent neutral. So if you pull that up, um, you know, you're looking at close to ninety percent. Um, having said that, we understand the ten percent, and I want to work on the ten percent. Um, we're gonna continue to do that. But I think we pride ourselves in focusing on the teachers, um, working together. I think that's a relationship with the union. And so that's just one question. We have, again, a whole survey, uh, that was outlined. So again, I'm looking at the total data for the district with, like we said, twenty-five hundred plus employees, but when we talked about the teacher retirements, you know, you're looking at fourteen twenty-five, and I presented them earlier. So we have to look at the full data set. When we look at, um, questions, superintendent works to create a positive school climate. Again, we have another seventy-two percent and then sixty-six percent in neutral, so you're looking at really eighty-eight percent of the staff when we look at all the staff. Again, we're gonna have individual stories. I'm gonna tell you too, that there's gonna be times when, and you know I'm as in HR, and I've had to make difficult decisions. And I know our staff are gonna have to make difficult decisions. Sometimes, when you make difficult decisions, people aren't gonna be happy. But in some cases, um, like when you're dealing with, um, uh, different situations through HR or different individuals, y- you are holding people accountable because it also comes down to working with, um, our students. Having said that, most of our staff, we don't have to interact that way, but you're always gonna have a percentage. And I respect, you know, staff that have differing viewpoints, um, but the, the overall data, the district doesn't, you know, support it when we look at both retirement consistency. And then the other one is just, um, superintendent is committed to building positive relations to the staff and members. Again, this is, uh, uh, you know, superintendent of a district twenty-five hundred. I've prided myself on really getting in with, um, the schools. Right now, we can't, but sixty-five percent and then twenty-two percent neutral. Uh, I have the same data from central office, and David, if you're, I know you're scrolling over it. You know, I, I'm just gonna summarize it, because I know we want to move on, but generally eighty-two percent. When you look at it, again, this is a pretty decent survey. When you look at nine hundred-plus people that took the survey, I think close to a thousand. So, the overall data, again, there's a certain percentage that are not satisfied, so we have to work with them. Um, and I want to work with them and, um, you know, we want to make improvements. So I'm not gonna say everything's perfect, but I'm gonna say I pride myself and I'm willing to sit down with teachers and work through it and those, and I'm gonna engage them, and that's what I've done throughout my career. And that, that's what I expect of my administration, to be customer service oriented. Uh, when we talk about immediate supervisor, this would actually include everyone in the district, because when we did the survey, we had another column that said immediate supervisor. Well, obviously, the people that are supervised by their immediate supervisor, what does that mean? That's central office? That, that's superintendent, although I have a, a smaller number that I directly supervise, but that's also your building principals, to your coordinators and everyone. And so if you look at that data, you have eighty-two percent, um, strongly agree or agree, and then ten percent neutral. And then again, disagree, you have seven point four percent. So again, understanding that we have that percentage. Uh, but the, the direct supervisor has that relationship. So this question to me even means more, because even me as superintendent, when I'm going throughout the district, they may have limited interaction. I've been working hard to get, have more interaction with, with teachers, and again, in a non-COVID, you can do that. have more interaction with, with teachers. And again, in a non-COVID, you can do that, uh, but it is somewhat difficult. But this shows the direct supervisor, the people know that they're direct supervisor and they're commenting on it. It was done anonymously. I wasn't involved in it. Again, there was input that was kind of directed, um, you know, we had a consultant that came in that worked with the, um, advanced ed. And I know trustee Thorpe, you were the representative. It ended up coming through. The board saw this during the evaluation. Again, we were also, we're going to, uh, make some of this, we have a lot more questions on this too. The trend the board has seen and it generally follows that. So what I'm going to say is those teachers that, um, um, you know, uh, you know, may not be happy with the situation or those staff, we're going to work with them. We want to improve and we want to hear their thoughts and there's chat avenues and challenges or channels to go through, including when we do do the survey. So we, we took comments and things and we looked at that. I had Ms. Farage analyzed it and we tried to correlate the data. So we want to make improvements. And that's what we're looking to do. And that's the other reason, I'll just say a few other things. Um, teachers, uh, when I go into the chatting, I, I have not seen where the teachers hold back. They share. I believe that they're very comfortable. They're, they're challenging us with questions. Uh, anyone who's been to an in-person chatting event with me, honestly, it is a great dialogue with staff. Um, a- and, and I appreciate that. So to me, that means that they, they have enough trust to put themselves out there and to be critical at times and to hear that. And I'm listening to that and I want to hear from them. So I want to hear from those teachers. And so for that teacher that maybe that teacher that we, was just in the letter that I don't know who that is, you know, I apologize that we didn't reach you. You know, I wish we could have done better for you and we're going to do better for each and every teacher, but we also have to look at the data in its entirety for a district our size. And I think, um, again, we have improvements to make, but our district prides herself in, in those ethics and working together. And we're going to continue to do that and continue to work with our union groups. Um, and when the union groups come to us, because maybe a teacher feels like they don't want to, we're going to listen to them and try to resolve it through those channels. But again, the data really does support that the direct supervisors have a, a good relationship and then we have to work on the others. So appreciate David pulling up that data and I'm glad that we did have some of that survey data available. Again, there's a lot more questions, but we just wanted to pull a few. Thank you.
Dr. Malenko, I'm going to say the same thing I said to Luke earlier. Numbers are important. Surveys are important, but we can't lose touch with personal issues. We don't have to answer that. I was going to ask a question. When was the last time we reached out to, to, to a teacher, not just a staff member, to a teacher that left on, let's see, just not happy? When was the last time we reached out to her or him and sat down with them and said, what could we have done? We're not perfect and I do not question, I do not question your ethics when it comes when you say, you know, you support teachers. I know that. I've known it for a long time. You do support teachers, but there are some things sometimes that are happening. We need to look into it. Uh, you're saying ten percent? I would have a problem with if it was three percent. I personally would have problems if it was one teacher that we can do be better with. Uh, I like the direction things are going the past year. Not only like it, I love the direction things are going. Maybe it was a change of leadership and, uh, you know, I'll leave that one alone. Maybe it's just, you know, there's, there's more communication going on right now. But yeah, one teacher leaving here, not on a happy note, which I brought a couple forward, but okay, then I backed off, but that's not acceptable. That's not acceptable. If there's one teacher right now, right now in our district, that can reach out to you and we can better their life for whatever reason. There, there is no bad teachers. There is no bad teachers. The teacher spends seventeen years in our district, gives her, she gives us, you know, everything they have. Then all of a sudden, may, maybe something's going on in her life. Maybe their father's got cancer. Maybe they have a sick child at home. Maybe they're dealing with things. We should reach out to that teacher and say, hey, what's going on? I know the principals do an amazing job. They know their staff, but if there's something going on, we need to, we need to reach out to those teachers. Again, exit surveys. I think we can do a lot better jobs. I just recently found out that exit surveys go to their emails and none of them want to answer them before they leave. And once they leave, we shut off their emails. So I don't know how they're going to respond to us if we shut off their emails, but you said the magic words, there's room for improvements. And we should take advantage of every opportunity for improvements because without teachers, you can't do anything, especially in, in any school. Without teachers, what good is it? This report that you gave us today, I don't want to get into it now, but there's some information there that probably, you know, I thank trustee Thorpe for asking for this information, but there's some things we probably need to get to. But not now, that'll be a whole different discussion. Thank you. Secretary Lane, a moment you've been looking forward to.
You're ready for me to read?
Yes, please.
Before we move on, I have a question, President Barry.
I'm sorry?
I have, um, a comment, not a question. But I think, um, you mentioned the survey is very important and a great organization survey their employees on an annual basis. So I, I'm looking forward for this years, especially with all of the things that have happening to, to get some, uh, immediate feedback from our teachers and staff on how well the district has done during this pandemic and throughout the year. I think we should do that on a, an annual basis to get a pulse of, of how the teachers and how the staff and employees are, are feeling about the organization. Um, so that we don't lose track. And at the same time, is you don't have to wait until the survey comes. It can always be forthcoming to your super, uh, fi- to your supervisor or to, um, Dr. Malenko immediately or to any of, to all of us. So, um, I think it's crucial that we, we survey employees on an annual, on an annual basis or semi-annual. That's great organizations do that.
Can I just say something too, just more in a personal, I talked about, you know, going into, I'm going to say it right now. I welcome, you know, teachers that may want me to, or other administrators in the district to stop in. I want to come into more classes and listen. Teacher, I, I had a conversation with a couple of them actually on Friday, which I shared with you. Um, it, uh, was a great conversation. It allowed me to understand some of the challenges. So, um, I'm, I'm open to coming in. I want to be welcomed into class if you want me to come in and I'm listening, willing to listen. Willing to sit down and, and right now it's virtual. And, and again, of course, we'll look at, you know, survey, but that's, we're talking about the personalized thing. I want to be there and do that. And it is challenging because we're such a large district, but we're still going to do it. And, and I, I, you know, as I mentioned, uh, I appreciated, uh, Jane facilitating that. And I had another teacher that, you know, volunteered and I'm trying to get a few more. Uh, and part of the reason I'm trying to do it in a volunteer is because I don't want to just pop into a Zoom meeting and here I show up. I don't think it's the right thing to do at this time. Um, you know, people were accustomed to, uh, we used to just come into classrooms and really it was for support. But right now we don't want to do that because everything is kind of new and so I'd rather do it in a more comfortable for the teacher. Um, and but they've been very valuable and, you know, so I just want to mention that as well, that we're going to do that and I'll work with Jane and others that may invite me in other places. So I, I'm excited to do that.
Say it again. I don't question you.
Yeah, I know.
I don't question you whatsoever. Okay? If there's one employee hurting, that's one too many. So if there's one employee hurting enough to leave the district with negative experience, that's one too many. There's room for improvement. Thank you.
Sure.
Trustee Lane?
That would apply also to the superintendent. I've been through many superintendents and I can tell you that a board that doesn't value, uh, their leadership will also suffer. So I, I, I disagree that one employee, uh, leaving is, is, I disagree that there are no bad teachers. Sometimes there are bad teachers. And, uh, I don't think that there exists an organization that has one hundred, especially of any size, that has one hundred percent employee satisfaction.